Under, actually a combination of 13, 14, plus others.
What's going on here, Henry?
Just mayor. Some buildings that we recovered.
Do you want to know the list of people that won't talk?
Brenda.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock. And as mayor, I hereby call to order the July 27, 2015, meeting of the Laconia City Council. As always, we'll start our meeting with a salute to our American flag. Please rise. If you will, then join Councilor Brenda Behr in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, I will note that our minutes are being taken tonight by City Clerk Mary Reynolds. We'll ask her to please call a roll.
Councilor Joy.
Here.
Councilor Littman.
Here.
Councilor Behr.
Present.
Councilor Hamel.
Here.
Councilor Walden.
Here.
Presenting Mayor.
Present. Let the record show that five of six councilors are present this evening, and a quorum has been established. Before we get into the regular agenda, I would like the council to make note of the fact that we're going to add an item under Old Business. Tonight, after the temporary traffic order in River Street, we'll have another item that has to do with a inadvertent error we made last week in approving the resolution relative to the water fund. So we'll take that up under Old Business. And deal with that then. Okay, next up is adoption of minutes of previous meeting. We have the regular minutes that were sent out to all of us for the meeting of July 13. A motion would be in order to approve those minutes as submitted. So move. Moved by Councilor Bullock, seconded by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion of the July 13 meeting minutes? All those in favor of adopting those minutes as submitted, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing. Unanimous. Next up, we have the Consent and Action Calendar. One item on the Consent and Action Calendar tonight. And these, for our audience's sake, are items that typically do not require any debate or discussion because they're something that's routine business that council has dealt with before. And tonight, what we have before us is a temporary traffic order for the New Hampshire Coffee Festival to be held on Saturday, September 19, 2015. I believe this was last held in September of 2013. And I'm assuming that the traffic order is the same as it was in 2013. So a motion would be in order to approve the temporary traffic order for the New Hampshire Coffee Festival in downtown Laconia on September 19. So move. Moved by Councilor Walden. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion of this temporary traffic order? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, and that traffic order is approved, is submitted. Next up, we have Citizen Comments for Matters Not on Tonight's Agenda. This is the appropriate time in the meeting for anyone who's present tonight who wishes to address the council about a matter that is not anywhere on tonight's agenda. Anyone who meets that definition with us tonight? No? Okay. We don't have any hearings. We don't have any communications. No public hearings tonight, no presentations. We're moving right along to the mayor's report. And I have two things to remind our citizens about tonight. Very quickly, one is we have a lot of vacancies on city boards and commissions. And I believe, I have a list in front of me, which I'll read quickly, but I believe there's even an addition to that because I think one of the members of the zoning board, I believe, has recently resigned. So we also have a vacancy now on the zoning board of adjustment as well. So the list, as I have it, is Heritage Commission, one alternate position is vacant. Board of Assessors, two alternate positions are vacant. Zoning Board of Adjustment, two alternate positions are vacant. And now, one regular position. Library Board of Trustees, two alternate positions. Highway Safety Commission, one regular position. Building Code Board of Appeals, two public member positions. One must be an architect, and one must be an electrician. Personnel Advisory Board, one regular position. Trustee of the Trust Funds, one regular position. Conservation Commission, one regular position. The Lakeport Tax Increment Financing District Advisory Board, five regular positions are still open. And the Weers Tiff District Advisory Board, three positions are still open. So I don't know what all that adds up to coming to a total, but it's a lot. And so now would be the time for anyone out there, or anyone you know, who you think would, has been thinking about stepping up and volunteering to serve on a city board or commission. I would advise you, ask you to contact anyone on the city council, including myself, or perhaps more appropriately, the city manager's office, for the details of what the boards do, and when they meet, and what the obligation is. And hopefully, we'll get some volunteers to fill that, those positions. The second thing I want to remind everyone is, is that we actually have an election coming up this fall for municipal offices. And the filing period for that election opens a week from Wednesday, on August 5, and runs through the following Friday, which is August 14. And up for election this year, in our odd-year city election, is the mayor's position and all six council positions, as well as, I believe, four school board seats, representing wards one, two, six, and one at large seat. Two police commission seats, all the election official seats. Again, if you're unsure about that, a list can be had at the city manager or the clerk's office, in terms of what all those are. But I don't believe, Mrs. Reynolds, it costs anything anymore, does it, to file for office? Not even a dollar. So, please, if you're considering running for office, or have ever considered it, that filing period lasts 10 days, and opens next Wednesday. We are now at a portion of our meeting to solicit citizens' comments for any item that is on tonight's agenda, at any place on tonight's agenda. Now is the time for anyone who wishes to address the council for an item that's anywhere on tonight's agenda to come forward. Mr. Morissette, nice to see you.
Mayor, council. For the record, my name is Kevin Morissette. I live at 518 Shore Drive in Laconia. And I'm here tonight to, under nomination, appointments and elections, planning board, item number one. Having been a builder and developer for the past 29 years, I've been before the planning board quite a few times. And I just think over the last little-
Could you move the microphone in front of you? Thank you.
I just think over the last little bit, that the planning board's attitude is not the friendliest that it could be. I think there's a change needed. You know, there's rules and regulations that everybody goes by, and then they seem to have their little personal qualms that everybody wants. And those are the ones that are very difficult for anybody to deal with. Everybody seems to have their own little agenda of what they want, where it should be, what color it should be. And I don't think those things should be in the board. And, you know, having lived my whole life in Laconia, 55 years, people that I'm out talking to, you always get the, everybody gives me the impression Laconia's very difficult to do business with. People tell me all the time, I don't know how you do it. And I think, as a taxpayer of the city of Laconia, I think that it would be nice to hear positive and have the boards more friendly, more helpful. And I think that would go a long way with the city. I know tonight, you got a chance to vote, and to have three more years of the same, I don't think is what the city should be looking for. They need change, they need a better attitude. How can we help you? You get to the same results, you know, with or without the help, but it's a lot nicer to have the help and the attitude that we're here to help you, instead of we're here to fight against you. And just for one example, Lenny Lane Road Acceptance, as you people know, that was before you, not that long ago. And it was very difficult to get from point A to point B, and thank God this council did. But through the whole process, once we found out and dug into the regulations, that there was an early acceptance already on the books, and, you know, nobody ever found it till we dug into the whole issue, but now with that. And it did get resolved, and there is a nice set of rules and regulations now, so the next person who gets their road accepted knows exactly what they're up against. And some positive did come out of that, even though it started out very negative. But the end result was that we have a nice new set of regulations that we know what we need to do, and that'll help everybody that develops in the city. So I just wanted to express that to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Hamilton McLean. I live at 19 Lantern Circle in Laconia. I just want to say for the record that I am a member of the planning board. And I just wanted to start with a few qualifications on my comments this evening. I'm only a short-time resident here in Laconia. I come from New Hampshire originally. Left, went down to New Jersey, spent many years down there, and also in New York, where I sat on the boards of conservation commissions, zoning boards of appeals, and planning boards. I was also an appointed official administering a federal program for a municipality in Westchester County. And most recently, I was appointed by former Governor Shaheen as the state's first energy manager. So with those qualifications, I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly on both sides of the fence. I have seen the developers, I have seen the property owners, I have seen the volunteer board members, and what they have brought to the table, and what they have been confronted with. I read articles in the paper lambasting the current chairman of the planning board. I have seen and worked with chairmans over the years. I have also worked with a number of different planning directors, building inspectors, city managers. And I can tell you from my experience outside of the little community of Laconia, that you have some really fine people that are objective, that listen, that communicate well, and they hold Laconia's best interest at their very core. I have not seen divisive behavior or obstructionist behavior in the planning board in the two years that I have sat on the board. And where the public comments are coming from that believe that the planning board is biased, that it is divisive, I think is totally unfounded. I don't know the individuals personally who made these comments, but I have seen these comments before. I know the individual, the characteristics of those individuals. So in support of the planning board, and in support of the planning board chairman, I would urge you to seriously consider the record of the planning board in approving and reviewing in good faith and in all due haste the projects that have come before the planning board. And look at the number of positive projects and development that have gone on in the last 12 to 24 months. And that is in no small measure the result of the leadership of the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Clay Dunn, 200 Garfield Street. Last time I was here was July 7, Monday, 2013. I didn't get as warm a welcome as I hope I get this evening. I don't know conflict of interest here or whatnot, but I haven't heard anything positive from this planning board in the past two or three years. I do several projects in Belmont, Guilford, and Laconia. Not recently in Laconia. Like Kevin said, there's two, you've got to get to the end, it just depends on how you get there. And it's a struggle. I've heard nothing positive from the chairman and from this planning board whatsoever. Give you a short story. I own a bus depot on 106 in Belmont. My tenant got all the state approvals from Concord for a 6,000-gallon fuel tank. We had to be closer to the wetlands, got all this paperwork. The only problem is he missed the town paperwork. He didn't know that he had to get the town stuff, too. They put it in, and the town of Belmont worked for six months, getting the, after permit, getting all the paperwork, and getting everything in order for us to get, you know, have everything the way it should be. If that was Laconia, you know, there'd be a lot different situation. I mean, some people make some honest mistakes once in a while, they miss something, or whatever. Not everybody's trying to just slide something in. So I really think it's time for a new direction, and it'd be nice if you could think long and hard about. I don't think we'd have to worry about whether we recycle, which is what we talked about. You weren't here on July 7, 2013. I don't think we'd have to worry about whether we recycle every two weeks if we had a more productive planning board and development in the city of Laconia. That would be one of the last things we worried about. I have 65 tenants. They put a green garbage can out every week, because they don't know if it's this week, last week. They think, they put three cans in the thing so that they take out their other garbage, they just leave it out there. You don't recycle every two weeks, and you do that because you don't have a productive planning board that gets development in the city of Laconia. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morissette.
Yes, I'm up. Hello, everybody. My name's Peter Morissette. I own a bunch of property here in Laconia. I run Joyce Janitorial Service, Lake Trigion Party, PEM Properties, DSLTK Properties, Red Nelson Properties, JJS LLC. I have about 80 employees here in the city of Laconia. We built the business from four employees to over the 80 we have now. The first thing I want to say is, one thing, because I don't want to make this a complete negative situation, I'd like to say, for the first time, we finally have a city manager that we brought into the city that's actually qualified to do the job versus what we've had in the past. I think Scott's done a great job. You can go and talk to him. He doesn't want to cut your throat after the fact, like some of our other city managers did. That's the first thing. The other, the reason you've never seen me floating around at any of these meetings or down here at City Hall, I have a cleaning contract with the city that I've had for a long time, that goes out the bit every four years. I don't want to put that in jeopardy, but I do what I'm supposed to do. My brother's handled the projects, but I just watch what goes on in the background because I pay all the bills. So the reason why I'm here tonight, the last, I bought the church up in the Weers, and I've been poked and prodded enough with this little Weers project from some of the neighbors and some of the people, that as Mr. Hutchins sits on the board, and he's a neighbor. And I just think, you know, some of the personal attacks that we've done, I'm not sure if that's really what the representation that the city needs to put out there. I really think it's, I really think it's a poor situation that we have, that we've got people out there that want to, you know, doesn't stick to the facts when he wants to get something done. He shows up here and tells all the boards he's on, and then he comes out with his personal stuff, and you ask him a question, "Oh, I can't answer that, I'm on the board." But he can't have it both ways. It's the first thing I'll say. Tonight, I had, I had talked to five different people about coming to tonight's meeting. We got a couple here, but three of them wouldn't come because they were worried about when they go before one of the boards, that there's going to be problems. So that's why some of them aren't here. And like Clay Dunn, I'm going to give you an example. We bought a building up in Meredith where the Ponzi scheme was, and the building was out of the zone that it was in. And we went to the town of Meredith, which my brother did that, and talked to the people in the town of Meredith. They walked us through step one to step 10, all the way through the whole thing, to get this thing done for us, because they thought it was a good idea. And we just never get that when we go, you know, to look for something. I'd really like to have somebody say something bad about Washington Street after all the hoops and everything everybody put me through up there. And I know we had some, a little fight back, but, I mean, I don't think it's the best-looking house on Washington Street. And I don't think anybody can say that it's not. And talking about Washington Street, and this is what I'm talking about when we talk about, you know, some of the stuff with their own personal opinion, about making me turn a little building, do this, do that. The first plan that I gave the city of Laconia for the planning department met every regulation that the city of Laconia had. And that's just one comment that I'll bring up, and I've talked to a couple of you people about this before. When somebody's doing a project in the city of Laconia, my own personal opinion, we have a recycle program, we're talking about not wasting paper, this and that, we needed eight sets of plans with 12 pages per set. We should have one set of plans drawn up on the first thing. The people downstairs send out an email to all the managers in the city of Laconia, and tell them they need to come by and initial it. If you've got any questions, the planning people can answer it for you. And then from there, before we start making up eight sets. So you made me make up eight sets, 12 pages, and you made me do it three times. Because every time somebody wanted a little change, we did it. We spent $2,000 on copying fees. The whole estimate from my engineer, who works all over the state, gave me a price of $3,000 to $3,500 bucks. I spent $7,200 with him. He said that he's never seen anything like that, to get a little thing through like that. So I'll just make one other comment about Washington Street, and sorry, I'm going on a little bit, but I need to vent here. I've just had enough of some of the stuff here. So Washington Street. We go to them, and we say, "We're going to take the trees down." They show up, they say, "You're not taking the three oak trees down in the front." The planning board, on their first meeting, said, "Them trees are to stay." We said, "The trees are hanging over the tops of the roofs, they need to come down." And in the thing, and you go back and you take a look, it's right in the record that them trees are not to be cut. So we didn't cut the trees. So we go through, the first people, actually, somebody left early, but the first people that move in with a brand-new car, fall comes, the trees shake with the wind, these big acorns come down over the roof, hit the porch roof, onto the hood of the car, $1,700 worth of damage to the car. And then that weekend, I spent $600 having the limbs taken off that was over the top of the roof. And I could have spent $600 and had the whole trees taken down to begin with. So, and there's no repercussion, you know, these people think that, you know, they sit on these boards that, "Oh, we'll just make this suggestion," and there's nothing that's going to happen. Did anybody send me a check for $2,300 in the mail? I don't know if it's still lost from a year ago. I don't know where the check is, but I haven't got the check yet from the city for their mistake, not my mistake, their mistake for making me leave the tree. Okay. That's, let's see here. One of the things that I think is a little bit also, as just an opinion, you know, I've lived here just like my brother all my life, you know, the population's been within a thousand of where it was 20 years ago. But I, sometimes I think we try to overthink the situation with some of these people using their own personal opinions. You know, this isn't big business, this is just the city of Laconia, and when I go to these, I do, in Meredith, Guilford, we've done some, and it's just not, it just seems like it's not very user-friendly when you go before it. We have some of the people that have come into, and I'm sure a lot of the people got good intentions, but we have some of the people that have come into the city that haven't been here in the city, they just think they've got better ideas than somebody else. But just show me one project that my brother or myself done that isn't better than what it was before. And I, you know, it's just very frustrating. I listened to this gentleman talk, and I've never met this gentleman, and I appreciate that he's on the planning board, but I got to tell you, after listening to this gentleman here, I want to build in the town that he's in, because it doesn't the town that I'm in. I'm not sure what town he's talking about, but it's not, you know, where we're putting these developments in, going before these boards with all the things. And in closing, I just want to say, and I know it's on TV, but I want to say this because I think it needs to be said. That church building up there, and please, just take it from my, you know, only my high school education, I guess I'll say, is the church building up there. If we get Mr. Hutchins back on as the chairman, I want to make a promise to the city council here tonight. I'm going to put an orange fence all around the building because they're worried about vehicles parked out there. And I don't even know when a vehicle's parked out there, I'm getting letters in the mail. Well, I'm not going to police the parking lot on a daily basis. My guy spent an hour and a half picking up trash after motorcycle week. Nobody thanks me for that, but they can send me a letter in the mail and tell me that there's a, with some pictures, that there's a trailer parked out there. Didn't even know there was a trailer parked out there. I've called the guy since then, asked him to remove it. But again, if I am not, I'm going to go before the zoning board, and I'm going to take it as far as I need to take it. And if we can't get some approvals for some inside storage, and you can't tell what's in the building, you can't see in through the windows, it's just an empty box in there now, and to help offset some of the taxes till I decide what I can do, but I'm not going to go before the planning board to develop that piece of property if Mr. Hutchins is sitting on the board, because he's not going to rip me. When these people that are on these boards make the comment when they come to a meeting, that he's only mowed the lawn once this year. You know, I don't know, Mr. Bullock, if you'd appreciate somebody from the town of Guilford going to a meeting and telling them that I hasn't gone up and cleaned up behind the buffalo lately, you know, he hasn't, you know, cleaned that up a little bit lately. I think we're overstepping our boundaries when we have people sitting on these boards that are making comments like this, whether it's a personal thing or not. Sitting there, the people from Sundown condominiums used, it all went along, because when it snows, they have nowhere to put their snow, so, in their vehicles, so they all pull across the street. The plow truck from Sundown plows the parking lot first, in my parking lot, so they can come over. The bus uses it as a bus stop. The kids use the canopy as a place to stay, and that's where all the people park. But, you know, nobody thinks, geez, isn't that nice of Mr. Morissette to let somebody use all that stuff? But instead, they want to tear me apart in the newspaper, and I'm sick of it. That's why I'm here tonight, and I just think that we're headed down the wrong way. And again, I'm going to put a snow fence up, and I'm going to keep everybody out of the parking lot, whether it's the neighbors, whether it's this one, so that I'm not getting any more complaints, and I'll develop it three years from now after Mr. Hutchins is gone. Because he's not getting me before the planning board so that he can have control over what I do. I just think it's ridiculous, and I appreciate your time and everybody listening to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is John Remington. I live at 61 Pendleton Road. And I neighbor the church parking lot and the church on two sides. I spoke before the ZBA last week. And I'm here to speak about Warren Hutchins. I met Warren in 1992 when I first started running on Pendleton Beach. I've known him through acquaintance, was on a board with him, a national board. I found him to be nothing but honorable.
Hold on just a little bit, please.
I found him to be nothing but honorable. He's been kind, he's a gentleman. I think that when you see the number of people that are looking for positions on the city, different boards here, that's the kind of person with character that you'd like to have appointed. Never seen him do anything unfair. I've been before the planning board twice with my property. I've not been before the planning board myself. Was represented by Steve Smith and Rod Dyer. My plan was, my property, when I bought it, was zoned for 163 units. We downzoned it for cluster development to 15. Recently, we changed it to 11, because it's shorefront residential. And I think outdoor storage or indoor storage of any magnitude should not be allowed in the district. But tonight, I'm here only to say, speak on Warren Hutchins's character, because that's what we're looking for in America, is leadership. I cannot find anybody that, I don't know anyone that will speak ill of his character. Mr. Harvey Moses is chairman of the Pendleton Beach Association. He spoke before this board that he had unanimous vote of 36 people at their recent annual meeting. I tried to get, I found out about this meeting tonight at 5:30, and I could not get anybody else to come at that moment. But there are people that are concerned. I wish Mr. Morissette well in developing his property, but I think he should fit within the rules of the city of Laconia as they are. One of the problems with zoning boards, because I'm a builder and a developer, go before boards in different cities, the problem is the council really sets the rules, and sometimes rules are in conflict. And it's the boards that you appoint, or people volunteer for, to try to determine what is the right thing to do when there is conflict within. But I've found the city to be fine to work with. There are some things that I would like to have done- There are some things that I would like to have done differently, but I had to go through the process. And the reason you have this process is to try to make the City of Laconia better. And, once again, I, I'm here to speak on Warren Hutchins's character. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? You look familiar.
Yeah. So I just got one more comment. I'm not here to, to question Mr. Hutchins's, his character or anything else. When he overstepped his boundaries, when he stands up and he says something to somebody, when they start picking apart, "I've only mowed the lawn once this year." I'm trying to drive that home. We need to understand, if that's what he's worried about as a neighbor, that I've mowed the lawn once, when you look at all my projects in the City of Laconia, every one of them, except for that one, because the, the lawn has been ruined by the church just leaving it and letting the building go to heck, is mowed every other week. Take me to one piece of property in Laconia that isn't better, that I own, s- since I bought it. And, and that's what I'm saying about, these people are using their own personal opinions versus sticking with the regulations. The church put a lot of regulations on that piece of land, and it's made it very difficult to do anything with the piece of land. So, the whole argument was, and, and again, I would be, I would be agreeable to something like, if this would be a five-year thing, where we could get some storage and go back before the planning board, so they could put that rule or regulation in there. But when they start ripping me up before I even come out of the box, because they think I'm trying to do, the building is falling down around it, the, the shingles are blowing off the, the thing, it's doing nothing. I mean, to have it sit there, and, I understand, we, we don't wanna put it, all kinds of storage, and I understand in their backyard, but I don't know if the motorcycles are gonna start at nighttime, if I put some motorcycles in there, if they're gonna start at night and they're gonna hear them. I, I guess I'm just not, I'm just not seeing where the, you know, what the big deal is to the fact that it's just sitting there to begin with. It's an empty building, it's an empty shell. And I, I just think that we're, we're headed down the wrong way when we're letting somebody start with, with, with stuff like that, that, you know, tearing apart somebody's character when, when I didn't, when, you know, I don't even go to the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, speak to an item that's on tonight's agenda?
Um, I don't know the chairman personally, um, either, but the negativity in Laconia has, has been higher than I've seen it, for no other reason at all. I think it's time for a change, and get some fresh blood in here, and give her another shot, and give her a go at it. And, um, sometimes when we're afraid of the future and we're not sure, um, we stick with the old. But I think, if you look, if you make a change, a year from now, six months from now, you're gonna be very happy with, if, if we get the right person in here. So I, I think it's just time for a change, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm gonna change the topic a little bit. My name's Kevin Leonard from North Point Engineering. I'm here representing the Laconia Community Land Trust about the temporary traffic order 2015-12 that was discussed last meeting. Um, I just wanted to, uh, point out that I, I am the one that, that's on-site regularly, and will be performing the inspections as, as outlined in the current draft of the, um, traffic order proposal. I wanted to thank the city manager, and DPW, and the folks that have recently been out there the last couple of weeks to look at that situation, and help us resolve that, uh, for, for the benefit of the project and for construction to happen out there. Uh, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, last chance. Anyone else? Okay, committee reports is next up on the agenda. I don't believe we have any committee business tonight that I'm aware of. Liaison reports, any councilors wish to, uh, offer something in that area tonight? No? We're on then to the city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have included in your packet this evening the project's update, uh, for the July meeting, the final meeting in July. Um, street paving projects continue to be at the forefront, so a, a nice list of projects that we've got. Final paving on Guilford Ave, Cleveland Place, the main street parking lot expansion, the area up by the hospitals, so Avery Street, Bachelor, Tyler Dixon, um, have gone through the, the gas and the drainage, and will be looking to, uh, move forward on those trenching projects in the near future, probably by the middle of August, and then start their reclamation of the road with the base core, uh, coat. And then we'll be moving on, um, to other work as well, and do the final coat later on this fall. Water main work is working, we've got some sewer work going on, so quite a bit happening as far as construction. The gateway project coming in on the main street bridge is really starting to, to take shape with a lot of the granite work and a lot of the space, that'll be new green space down there. The other items that, uh, are in the project update this week include, uh, update on Memorial Park, which was recently in the news, and concrete pad has been installed, that was funding that was already in place. Bleacher money, um, was also already in place, and now that the pad is installed, bleachers will be going in soon. And with the, um, budget just adopted two weeks ago, the funds were in there for the irrigation system for the ball field, up for the baseball field. So, um, anyway, those are a few highlights of what's going on at the Memorial Park. I had put in your mailboxes, um, on Friday, so it was there when you picked up the agenda, a couple of page memo that talked about follow-up information from the Public Works Committee meeting on, um, patching on Highland, um, which had some challenges and concerns with some manhole covers, as well as some catch basins. So we've outlined, um, who's doing what, what the city's role is. The city is going to provide asphalt at a cost not to exceed $12,000, oh, sorry, $1,200. We have, uh, a couple of types of fixes for the various catch basins and manholes, depending on, uh, the issues on them. Busby is taking care of all the labor with that and the fixing, also including bringing in the outside independent contractor for the infrared repairs where warranted, and he'll be picking up that cost. So I'm happy to follow up on any questions anyone may have on that document as well.
Any questions on Highland Street before we move on? Counselor Hamel.
Um, it's not really a question, it, it, it's a comment. It's a little bit discouraging, um, you know, this was brought up by a counselor, myself, about what was going on here with these structures. And, um, what's discouraging is, we have public works trucks that travel those roads every single day. And they travel all around Laconia, you see potholes or whatever. And, um, this was never brought up. So, now that it's being brought up, the contractor's actually gonna take responsibility to do some of this, which he should've. Uh, but if nothing would've been said, two years down the road, three years down the road, we wouldn't be eating the whole thing. So, you know, I, I don't know what can be done, but, you know, I brought it up before, these, these trucks travel all day long, they run over the same potholes, and they're there for weeks and weeks. They don't get fixed. And, uh, to me, there should be some kind of a document or whatever, they go out in the morning, and if they see something, write it down and give it to their, I mean, any, I don't care if it's a police car, or fire truck, or whatever. They should have a document to report something that they see as bad, and give it to the appropriate department for them to go and, and look at and take care of the problem. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I'm glad that they come to a resolution and it looks good.
And that's, that's a good point, Counselor, and actually that's something that I do stress with department heads at meetings, is that we have, you're right, variety of people, whether you're public works, water department, um, in the sewer end of it, police, fire, um, people traveling to and from work. So we do try to get all eyes on the road and, and focus on the things that need improvement. Sometimes it comes down to priorities and resources, and it's a limited construction season, and, um, you know, the crews really do a good job, but we certainly welcome, you know, the constructive criticism, and, you know, a little bit, not that it's on the roll of councilors, but certainly you're, you're a liaison for your ward and your residents as well. And I know I take calls from, from many of you about certain issues, and, and whether they're public works-related, police, fire, enforcement, you know, from, uh, building property. Um, you know, the staff really does try to be responsive, but we certainly welcome the, uh, the input and, and the, you know, heads up if someone sees something, so we, we do try to respond to that.
Thank you for looking into this and getting it resolved.
Absolutely. Um, I think the final item I wanted to bring to your attention this evening, we're gonna pass some handouts here, is we've given you preliminary Motorcycle Week figures, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I gave them to you. We were in the midst of, uh, not only wrapping up Motorcycle Week, wrapping up the fiscal year, a lot going on with the holiday there, so I'm just gonna wait a second till these roll around to you. So what I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, I said, early indications are, we're most likely looking at a $25,000 to $30,000 surplus in the way we track the revenues in the special revenue account. Um, and again, with all the items I just mentioned, still waiting on some final revenue numbers, some, uh, some reimbursement for vendors who had booked and didn't show, and we were refunding and tying some numbers, uh, late in the game, and I think, and I'll tie this into what Captain Clary said during the police budget presentation a couple of months ago, is, we received an invoice directly from the University of New Hampshire Police Department, and the UNH Police Department is our largest outside vendor, and it was a bill totaling $38,000 that had not come into the city at that point, and this is in somewhere around the end of the first week, early part of the second week of July, and it, and it appeared, um, really late in the game. If you recall, when Chief Adams and Captain Clary were here, they were discussing during the, the budget presentation, that a number of the outside police agencies were not, um, going to continue to work the Motorcycle Week event at our current rate of pay. They were going to require, uh, their own special detail rate of pay that their officers were getting in their community, and we knew it was something that we'd have to be addressing in budgets going forward, and this is the first year. To kinda put it in perspective, um, the police did not overspend their budget. They had two separate line items, one for our local officers for overtime, and that one came in under budget, and the out-of-town budget also was at $100,000, I believe. Was it $70,000? $70,000, and they came in right on. Last year, the same numbers, uh, let me back up. So, so it's the out-of-town police detail numbers is what was driving this budget. So in past years, police had been able to return somewhere in the area of $30,000 out of their budget, 'cause they were spending in the ballpark of $40,000. This year, they spent the $70,000. So, the police budget still came under what was budgeted, but the return, if you will, out of money they didn't expend was $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 area. In actual out-of, um, out-of-town outside police off, officer hours in fiscal year 14, we used 1,795 hours. This year, we used 1,767, so pretty much the same number of outside hours. The difference was, last year, at $27 and change an hour, um, you know, we spent $49,000, and this year, with rates being, um, $33, plus the retirement system cost, or $47 to UNH, um, we spent close to $70,000 in outside, even though the numbers were basically flat or down slightly. So that's really the difference. Our, our own, uh, in-house police labor was down $5,000 year-over-year. Last year was $21,000, this year was $16,000, and the fire, over time, came in, again, within rate and ballpark of where it was the prior year. So that's really what drove it this year. Revenues were down a little bit, as you're aware, there was hopes for some larger events at the drive-in, uh, that didn't materialize late in the game, so the number of vendors that utilized that site were down significantly from past years. I believe this is the second year that another large vendor space up there did not choose to, um, utilize their parking area for vendors, and I believe some of that went down to the racetrack in Loudon, where a new event is kind of taken up. So this is really starting to turn into a little bit more of a statewide event. I think you've heard Charlie St. Clair talk about it, and there's events in Loudon, there's events in Conway, in different areas of the state. So at the end of the day, uh, we basically were about $6,000 less in revenue than we were expenses, and then we also got in one of your carry-forwards tonight, the $6,000 that was approved in the budget. So that's where you see the $12,000, um, uh, figure. But, um, those, those are the numbers, I'm sorry, we're about $2,300, uh, upside down for this year alone, and then the, then the, the $10,000 or so for the, for the carry-forward, for the capital purchase. So total numbers, 146,000 and change in revenue, 149,000 and change in expense. So it's certainly, um, rate at a break-even scenario, which is, you know, the first time in, in my time here, and I think in, since we've started tracking for it separately, that it's come in that way. Um, so the police details seem to be driving it, even though the hours were consistent, um, and, and we did have a bit of a heads up, and it's just kinda come home to roost with these hours. So it's certainly something we'll be discussing as staff about what our options are, you know, on the expense side of it as we go into the event for next year.
So the fire extra duty from last year to this year held about the same?
Let me pull the exact number for you. This year, if you rounded, we're at 19.5, and last year, we were at...
We were at 20, we were at 19.3 last year.
19.3 and change. So we were within $200 of last year's number. And that obviously would include increase in, uh, in rates of pay over, year-over-year, as well as then ties, that ties into retirement system as well.
The thing is, just last year, we started charging the retirement directly for this.
Yeah. Retirement system component, and again, so when we, when we're doing, we're billing out for the UNH rate, it's $47 an hour, but those people, it's an all-inclusive rate, they're not our employees, so we're, we're, in essence, paying them as an outside contractor. For the other communities who are working for us, they're at a lesser rate, around $34 an hour, but they are our temporary employees, so we're paying, paying the workers' comp and the retirement system contribution on that. So, when you, when you look at it one way or the other, they probably net out to be the same. One is our employees, and in essence, we're paying the added cost. The other one is building all of that cost in and billing us a rate for outside contract.
Counselor Lippman has a question?
Two, actually, if I could. Um, Don, I, I think you were trying to say that, um, beyond what the manager was saying, that the, um, costs of, of retirement and other things associated with our own employees weren't previously charged?
Correct. I think in fiscal year 14, we started charging the retirement costs for our own employees relative to Motorcycle Week, and we, prior to fiscal 14, we hadn't done that. So that is an extra cost that's being reflected, that's not consistent with previous years.
Consistent with last year is the first time, so it's the second year we've been doing it. Yes.
I believe it's about $14,000?
Yep. Last year was a little over 11, and this year, it's a little over 14.
So, any other question or comment? Go ahead.
With respect to, um, the, uh, police, uh, you know, on the one hand, we're talking about, um, the event, you know, becoming a statewide event, which means the concentration of people that are coming, um, seems to be some quiet periods up there from what I, what I hear, and in terms of part of, when you're talking about getting together with department heads, that includes the police department with respect to calibrating staff differently?
Yes, and actually significantly, I know my first year here, Captain Clark was, was still on the force at that point, and he was, um, you know, one of the leads in the operations, and, so I know the police department actually tracks those hours done over the years, and there has been a significant number. We can actually get you that document and show you the reduction, but it absolutely is something that we do in the debriefing, and at the end of it, look at peak days, look at staffing levels, and, and try to monitor and adjust best we can. So absolutely, we will continue to do that.
Just a fault, just a suggestion that maybe if we can define our, our requirements earlier, you know, I suspect we're getting hit from the university, because the university's getting hit in the state budget, and they're trying to make up some of that distance on us, and whether we, um, could define and put out to bid that policing requirement earlier on, might give us a chance to recover some efficiency there in terms of expense.
Yeah, and, and we definitely can. I'm not sure it's tied to the state budget woes with, with, with UNH police. I think prior to that, they were working, in essence, at a discounted rate prior to, other than what their detail rate would be, if they were working in, in Durham or somewhere else on the event. So they were kind of already taking a home downtown discount, if you will, and I, I don't think it was so much the state budget, I think it was the, uh, the department and/or the officers or a union maybe was looking at and saying, "We need to get our current rate if we're gonna go, um, and work there," I think was more the sense of it. But, um, you know, we, we do look to make sure we get qualified, you know, people here with a certain amount of, of background and training, but we certainly, and we, I, I believe the chief could speak to it, that we have extended the reach, and we've started to bring in some officers from even further away than we have in the past, because there are a couple of departments who, um, aren't choosing to work for what we're offering to pay. But we, obviously, we'll continue to explore all options, including staffing and, uh, the ability to attract people at a, at a rate that makes sense.
Counselor Hamel?
Uh, in, in the debriefing, or, you know, it's probably already done, but, um, I'd like us to really look at staffing. Obviously, police reduced staffing from last year, uh, fire did not. I was told, fire department had kept six on at all times, uh, up at the Weers, and And there's plenty of nights up there that was no different than a normal summer day at the Weers, and they kept those individuals on. Also, they had a detail for fireworks where they paid two firemen to sit there and watch the beach during the firework, which is a state law. I think my point on that would be whoever's putting on the fireworks should be paying for that detail and not the city. When the bars and stuff hire the policemen to be in their bars during Bike Week, they pay them. So I think we ought to look into whoever's sponsoring that event to pick up those two firemen that are required to be there.
We can check with the Motorcycle Week Association on that arrangement. As far as the number at the Weers, part of that is to keep a dedicated ambulance there and with a number of people in the crowds. Even on key weekends of the Fourth of July, when you look at the number of people that are down at the beach, there's a need to keep a dedicated ambulance separate from a crew that's going to respond to a fire out of there. So I can't speak to if six were on all of the time, but I do know there's the desire, based on numbers, to have that ambulance available if needed down there.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item number one under new business is first reading of a resolution relative to amending the purpose of the non-capital reserve account and a request to schedule a public hearing for August 10, 2015 during the regular city council meeting. And I believe we have a copy of that resolution in our packet, number 2015-20, and would ask the manager to explain the resolution to us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this non-capital reserve account was set up back in 2005 by the council at the time to kind of address some maybe emergency needs or some other capital needs that weren't in the budget at the time, and it's worked out well. There's typically been money funded out of the budgets to go there, so there's a little reserve account for emergencies or something that comes up that's of importance during the year. When it was set up in 2005, the range of projects that it's supposed to be used for ranged from $5,000 to $20,000. And that was the threshold that was adopted. And looking at it, the recommendation to bring it up a little more to inflate it to today's numbers, we thought 10,000 is the minimum, and the thought being anything under 10,000, we would hope to be able to find it within existing dollars within a budget, and then maximize it up to $75,000 as a high end, you know, which still is a relatively small number. Council retains all control over determining how this money gets used to it, but that would be one update. The other update is the language in the resolution just above that. The original language as it stands now talks about solely for the repair and maintenance of publicly owned facilities. The thinking was that was a little bit of a gray as to what's a facility, is it just a building, you know, could it be an irrigation system, could it be tennis courts, could it be, you know, are clerks' records that date back 100 years that I know we've spoken of that need some maintenance? So we revised the language to read, "The purpose of this fund be solely for the repair, maintenance, restoration, and preservation of publicly owned facilities or assets." And that's the other change to it. Broadens it just a little bit, but again, full decision-making rest with the council. So this tonight is simply to refer it to a public hearing in two weeks and offer people the opportunity to chime in, as well as the council to chime in on that. But that was the thought process behind it.
Any questions or comments before we get a motion on the floor? Okay, the first thing we need to do is suspend the rules so we don't have to read the entire resolution. Motion would be in order to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read by title only. Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion of waiving the reading? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, and that is adopted. Next up, a motion would be in order to move the first reading of the resolution relative to amending the purpose of the non-capital reserve account as submitted Resolution 2015-20. Moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Baer. Any discussion of moving the first reading of the resolution? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. Vote is five to nothing. Resolution is approved. Next up, a motion would be in order to schedule a public hearing on August 10, 2015 during the regular city council meeting regarding a proposed amendment to the purpose of the non-capital reserve account. Motion by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. All who's in favor of scheduling a public hearing on this issue on August 10, please raise a hand. Thank you. Vote is five to nothing, and that hearing has been scheduled. Item number two, request to purchase surveillance cameras for the Laconia Police Department using town, town, district TIF funds. I believe Counselor Hamel requested that this item be placed on the agenda, and my understanding is that this, city manager, clarify this, that this typically expenditures out of the TIF account are referred first before they come to council to the TIF Advisory Board for a recommendation. In this case, we moved so quickly, that did not happen?
And that is typically what would happen, and I know it's a small number, but we do have the TIF Board for the downtown, and they're one of our boards and commissions. And while I've talked to the chairman, they're not opposed to it, just, you know, procedurally, and it was my fault for not picking up on it when it was brought up to, you know, Counselor Hamel said, could we place this on the agenda? There was support from the council. I made a note of it, I put it on, and in hindsight, I should have said that night, let's just refer it over to the TIF Advisory Board again. I don't think they're opposed to it, but I think procedurally, that's part of a role as the advisory board, that they, you know, can make recommendations. Not that the council can't do something without them, but just trying to be, just trying to be inclusive is just, I want to kind of put it out there.
Counselor Hamel, I understand you had some questions about the...
When we were talking about this, my request was for three, and I noticed it was down to two, but I was also looking at the bid.
I don't know why we went to more.
Pardon?
I don't know why we went to more.
But I was looking at the bid. From what I understand from the police department, we're right around five.
Chief? Chief Adams, welcome.
Good evening. I believe we're right around 4,200 per unit, somewhere in that area. And we've purchased one of the cameras with our budget from last year, and we plan on purchasing, if we can, two more cameras this year for a total of three. And we've been very happy with the camera that we bought. We've utilized it. We have it in the Court Street area. It's mobile. We can monitor it. We can zoom in and out. And surveillance cameras, in my opinion, are helpful, not only in investigating crimes that already have happened, but deterring those who may want to commit a crime.
Yeah.
So that's our plan.
These are there 24 hours a day.
We just had a recent case where we utilized...
Sorry?
I said, you know, these devices are there 24 hours a day, doing their thing, and that does nothing but help the police department, because you can't have an office...
So are we happy with this request going to the TIF Advisory Board as it's now worded, or would we want an amendment?
I would rather see it to be three. I would rather see three, not two.
Three? So that cost would then be...
I think we want, I think that 4,200 plus the shipping, so I think to be safe, we would put the not to exceed 9,000. So I think if you did up incrementally and said not to exceed 13.5...
13.5 for three?
Yeah. Just a reminder, if there is a purchase with the downtown TIF funds, the intent would be that they get used...
The TIF area.
In the downtown TIF area.
Yep.
Which, you know, if the department is still going to purchase another one or two to go with the one they've got, you know...
Theirs, they could put anywhere.
Understood. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear with that. If these are done with TIF funds, they need to benefit the TIF district.
Okay, with the understanding that this language would be changed from two, three cameras, $13,500, would Counselor Hamel make a motion to table this until it's reviewed by the...
I'll make that motion.
By the downtown TIF Advisory Board? That motion is made, seconded by Counselor Baer?
Yeah, but...
Discussion.
Yeah. I don't understand why it has to go to the TIF Advisory Board. If they should say no, we could still do it. It has expenditures of TIF money comes to the council.
I agree with you. I'm just thinking about the relationship between the volunteer board and what their role is in this, and just trying to extend, you know, point out possible extending a courtesy.
When do they meet?
They at least meet monthly. It may be every other week or twice a month, but it's definitely monthly.
I don't want to wait two months on this.
August 11th, so that would be right around the corner. Plus, we've already, well, I mean, today is the 27th, so it's a little over two weeks.
Before our next meeting, then, right?
Yeah, so it's...
No, it's the day after our next meeting.
Okay. We've already specced these, though. We know they work. We've got the bid, we've got the vendor, so it definitely would be a quick turnaround time. It wouldn't be like there'd be a long lead time once they got approved. I mean, Counselor Baer, you're right, the council could do...
So that means if they meet on the 11th, we can't vote on it until the 24th?
No, we meet the day after.
No, the day before.
That's July, you're looking at.
No, I'm looking at August, right there, 10th, they meet the 11th.
That'd be correct. If they meet the 11th, then it would be on your agenda for the 24th. And I would think where it's an existing vendor, and we know the product, we've got a bid, that it should be a pretty quick turnaround time. I don't think there's anything customized here that would be on the bid.
Can they have a, could they do a special meeting, I mean, before that? So we could vote on it on the 10th? Could you ask them?
I will ask them that. Again, it depends on the makeup of their volunteers, and if they're available to get together and hold a meeting, I can certainly ask them.
Could we do this, a motion that's subject to approval by the TIF? We could approve, buying them subject to the approval?
You could, but I think that's kind of reversing the roles. You're giving the TIF Board the final, you could always come back and overturn, and I think that gets a little messy.
I think that's backwards. So we have a motion on the floor to table this pending action by the downtown TIF Advisory Board, made and seconded. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, and that motion is, the request is tabled.
Thank you.
Next up, we have approval of the Emergency Ambulance Service Agreement between LRG Healthcare and the City of Laconia, and a request to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Counselor Lippman?
Recusing myself on this.
Counselor, for the record, Counselor Lippman is recusing himself from this discussion and decision. I recognize the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I passed out a memo earlier this evening for you, just to kind of put a little perspective, the value of this contract and what the city is getting out of it and the partnership. It really is a great partnership that gets a lot of interest from other communities around the state. So basically, turn on the back page of the memo and start with the paragraph, "Under the contract was first signed in 97." The value of the contract then was it allowed the city to send firefighters to paramedic school, do the advanced life support. The number of calls was much smaller then. But back in 97, 98, the benefit to the city over LRGH's contribution to the city, meaning for ambulances and staffing, less the revenues that the hospital was able to collect from the transports, the net benefit contribution to the city was a little over $114,000 in the contract back then. In today's numbers, the amount of calls is significantly higher. The value of what LRGH pays to the city in benefit of the firefighters and the overtime and the training in the ambulances was roughly $813,000. And in essence, the contribution that LRGH made to the city was about $368,000, meaning the difference between what they collected in revenue versus what they provided in support for equipment and staffing levels and training and large event coverage. So the contract is pretty similar in most aspects to the one that just completed. You will find in on the bottom of page, I forget if it's page nine or page 10. Let's go to page nine. Still talks about, I'm looking at L under cost and reimbursement. The hospital is still looking to cover the foremost senior non-officer paramedics and all of their wages and benefits, along with the deputy fire chief who oversees emergency medical services, and a flat dollar amount that we discussed during the adoption of the budget of $127,000, which will be indexed to the city CPI that we use in the budget, and that's towards basically 50% of the cost of our foremost junior firefighters. And that again is tied into extending the SAFER grant. So that's there where the $127,000 is offset, because we will be staffing to nine people on a shift, and the hospital would not need to be supporting that extra daytime person. They have been for a number of years. On page 10, you'll see where the full-time, I'm on page 10, number five, the number of overtime hours has been reduced to a current level of 1,000 hours across all billables. Where that number was, and I apologize, I didn't bring the former contract, I can get it to you, it was either 2,300 hours or 2,700 hours, 2,300 hours. So significant reduction in the overtime there, which again is just, as we've spoken of, is not adding new money on their part to the contract. It's reallocating, and the key component of that is us staffing nine, which allows us to staff multiple ambulances, which is a key component of why the hospital's supporting.
So over the 1,000 hours, where does that overtime come back to? The city? If they should go over 1,000?
If it would be over 1,000, there's, so it's a straight 1,000, which covers vacation, ambulance time, personal days, training of the paramedics, and our advanced DMTs for the state certification they need on shift coverage. That goes on. Anytime in addition that there's a straight recall for dedicated medical coverage, if we have two ambulances out and we need to do a recall in order to protect the city and it's based strictly to the ambulance, the hospital will pick those types of things up. So they're responsible for the overtime medical cost in addition to the training and the large events as well. And that's pretty much the way it's been structured for a number of years now.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Going back to L1 on your staffing, where it says the city has the intent for nine firefighters?
Yep.
Okay. Just for instance, that we have a real problem with our budget, and that might have to be cut. Does that forego the contract with LRGH?
I think then it would be a big enough item that we would go back in and want to renegotiate that component, or they may ask us to do that, because if we went back down to staffing of eight again, doesn't give the extra ambulance coverage, which is really important to them and important to the community. They may say, well, if you don't intend to staff the nine anymore, we need to pay for that extra person during the daytime hours like they had been doing, and they may want to reallocate some of that 127,000 again. At the same time, if we had a tough budget year and we weren't staffing there, we wouldn't necessarily need the 127,000 in that line item anymore. It could shift back to an overtime line item like in the contract. We're just wrapping up right now. So again, I don't believe there's any new money in here, but based on the city's intent of staffing nine, it allowed the hospital to free up some money to support us keeping it nine, because it kind of got them to the same point that they were at before. And this has the hospital's support and...
1,000 hours of overtime, is that 500 hours per year or 1,000 hours per year?
1,000 hours per year.
Per year.
Those numbers are on an annual basis. So it is a two-year contract, and it's written in there on the, I think on the first page, that if there's no objection, this contract could be extended for two years beyond it.
So in the separate, I'm sorry, I should ask, any other questions, comments from counselors? I had a couple, so I'll wait. So in the memorandum we have here that we just got tonight from the fire chief to you, I just wanted to go over these numbers. The last numbers here that the chief has would be for hospital fiscal year 14, which would have ended just almost two years ago, October or September, I think, is right of 2013?
Yeah, I think they're on October 1st to September 30th fiscal...
Oh, no, their fiscal 14 would have ended last September, October. So, okay, got you. All right, so during that period, if I'm understanding this correctly, the hospital, for that 12-month period, billed $1.1 million...
Correct.
And collected just over half of that. Only $612,000. So almost half of the ambulance runs in the City of Laconia were write-offs, according to these numbers, which is a pretty astounding number. So I'm reading that correctly?
Absolutely. And those are people who are uninsured and don't have the ability to pay?
Another question I had was about the ambulances themselves. On the first page of the contract, maybe it's not the first page, second page, enlists four ambulances that are currently in service. Does the contract address future ambulance purchases, or is it assumed that there will be none over this two-year period, or how is that?
Typically, it's, they've been updated them, I think, on every three-year cycle, and we bring the new one in. So it is addressed in here. The new ambulance coming in becomes the frontline ambulance, the next one drops back down to the second spot and the third spot, and the fourth one is right now maintained and stored, but it's a regional ambulance asset, because again, Lakes Region General Hospital serves a number of communities in the region. So I believe technically they take back ownership of the fourth ambulance and then reassign it somehow on a regional basis as an asset, even though it's still housed here, but it's available. But the city operates three ambulances.
So we operate three?
Correct.
All right. So again, what language, if any, is there in the contract that addresses future ambulance purchases?
So it would be under Roman numeral eight, we're talking about ambulances. And then it's always, it identifies the three that we have there right now, and then we identify the primary one and which one the backups are. And then if you go... And then if you go down to number four, you know, we're registering the ambulances and doing the inspections and... One second. Yeah, I think they're on a five-year rotating basis. I'm looking for the exact language. So it may not be on this one, it may have been on the prior one that we had it because during the term of the contract would have brought us to the fifth ambulance. So I think in the memo, the last one was done in 2012. So the next one will due to be replaced in 2017.
Okay. So the assumption in this contract is that no new ambulance would have to be purchased and equipped during the length of this contract?
Because on this one, we had it through 2000, the last new purchase was 2012. So on a five-year primary.
So the rotation is a new one every five years?
And that becomes the frontline ambulance and the other ones roll back to be a second and a third ambulance. And the 2012 purchase price was $252,000.
Okay, thank you.
So in that paragraph one, it really doesn't list the newer ones, just like these are old ones that are in there, 97, 98, and 2004, if that's the list of the ambulances we have now?
We'll make sure that we update that then. It's a good catch.
The other question I have is, back to page nine again, in the cost and reimbursement paragraph that you alluded to earlier.
Mm-hmm.
It is the intent of the city to hire to a staffing level of nine firefighters per platoon. And then some other language and whatnot. I guess my question is, is does signing this contract commit us for this two-year period to staffing at that nine level?
We broaden the language so that it would not have to be nine on every shift because I know you've heard Chief Erickson say that at certain times of the year, in the fall and in the spring in particular, when the crowds are less and it's not quite in the heating season, that even though we have nine on a platoon, he often doesn't fill that first vacancy, especially on an overnight shift. So we've left it at, it's the intent to hire nine people to a platoon, but it's not requiring us to always have the nine people on every single shift, is the way the language. The daytime hours are our busiest time for the medical calls and you see that in your statistics that we provide you on the monthly basis. That's where the peak calls come. So the intent would almost always be to have nine on the day shift, which is what the hospital was paying extra to have that coverage for in the first place. And when we do drop to the eight, it's typically on the overnight shift and again, in the fall and in the spring hours. So if we were in a budget situation, to your more specific question, and we didn't continue funding whatever, then I think that component of it, if I'm the hospital, I'm coming to the city and saying...
I'm not giving you the 127.
I'm not giving you the 127 because now we need to bump up our overtime hours from 1,000 to something else because we want that extra paramedic on the daytime shift and you're not going to provide it for us now. So I think that would be a reason to reopen the contract.
Would we be in breach of contract if we dropped to eight because of a budget crisis?
I think that would be a discussion they would want to have with us and if I were them, I certainly would want to have that discussion. And I think then it's a matter of shifting the 127,000 away from where it shows now because we're not using it to staff to the level of nine and they'll shift it over to increase the overtime hours in order to get the result they're looking for, which is that extra ambulance coverage during the daytime hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So I don't think, I would hope it wouldn't be considered, you know, a breach. Two sides would get together and discuss how we can make it work for both of us, so.
Okay, a motion would be in order to approve the emergency ambulance service agreement between LRG Healthcare and the City of Laconia, which is a two-year agreement commencing on July 1, 2015, as presented and to authorize the city manager to sign said agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion of approving the agreement? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is four to nothing and the agreement is approved. Thank you. Counselor Lippman is going to rejoin us now. Next up is carryforwards. Finance Director Donna Woodman has provided a list of expenditures for each request. This is in a memorandum dated July 24, 2015. And am I going to recognize the manager or Mrs. Woodman?
I'll jump in first and Donna will bail me out when I stray too far here. These are items typically in the capital items of nature or special projects that we've already always targeted carrying forward. So it's everything from unexpendited funds for general street repairs and sidewalks to milfoil treatment that always doesn't coincide with a fiscal year and/or sometimes we save up from the first year to the second year in order to do something. It was some of the funds that we've been putting away for saving up to do our revaluation and the assessing side or the master plan and the planning side. So it's not typically, or very minimally, the operational funds, it's more of the capital or larger items that we've been saving up towards something that are brought forward. They're identified as carryforwards, they're identified as to what purpose they're serving when we do carry them forward and if that changes, then they would have to be brought back to the council for any approval to shift them out of their designated spot. So you do have that protection in place. So we gave you, provided the council a preliminary list two weeks ago and this is now that the fiscal year is closed and the final numbers have settled, these are the numbers. There's no new additions to the list that you provided with two weeks ago. It basically was just confirming the numbers now that the fiscal year has closed, the dust has settled, so to speak.
Any questions? Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, on the last page, Motorcycle Week, $6,000 for the fire department server. I thought that was coming out of the capital FNF budget during the construction.
That was not, that was not in that budget, it was in your original proposed budget that you got in March and it was identified to come out of the Motorcycle Week account at that point.
This was in fiscal year 15. This was money that was allocated.
This was last year's budget.
Last year's money that was allocated for the new server. And originally, we thought we were going to have it all on order before the end of the year, fiscal year. And with the construction and everything, it's going to be happening in the next couple of months.
Well, then I guess we need to discuss when we do the fire thing of what's, were they buying with monies from the construction? Because there's something in there for the servers.
No, I don't think the server, I don't think the server was included.
It's going to cost more than $6,000 to replace the server over there.
Originally, if we had gone on to bid on the fire station and started construction in the fall, we would have used this money prior to June 30th. But because we didn't start construction until after the first of the year, we're not at the point where we've ordered the server and been ready to install it yet. So that's why they carry forward on it. So it's nothing new, the, that amount was never in the FFNE in the fire budget. It was a year ago's budget that was intended to have that funded that way.
Okay. Counselor Bolduc?
Yeah, on page two on the park, there's $1,675 for adopt a spot. And over here on page three, under planning, there's $19,750. That's for the same adopt a spot.
Wrong description.
What's that?
Wrong description under planning.
Yep.
Okay.
Good catch, Armand.
Hi.
Good catch.
Yeah, the 1675 out of the parks is for the adopt a spot. The 19,000 should have been carried forward towards either ordinance reviews or the master plan. One or the other will adjust that.
A lot of buckets.
Absolutely. We've got a lot of spots to adopt. How many can we put you down for?
I got two in Lakeport this week.
Okay.
Cut and paste.
Any other questions on carryforwards? One spent money out of fiscal 14 being carried forward, I mean, out of fiscal 15 being carried forward into fiscal 16? We move, are we ready to move the, make a motion here? So the appropriate motion would be to approve the carryforwards as presented to us tonight in the memo dated July 24, 2015. It's moved. Moved by Counselor Lippman, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? Halls in favor of approving these carryforwards from fiscal 15 to fiscal 16, please raise a hand. Motion is carried by a vote of five to nothing. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just want to make sure that the final version of this is corrected for Counselor Bolduc.
Yep.
We're on to unfinished business. Temporary traffic order 2015-12, truck and equipment access to River Street. Issue we discussed at our last meeting and ask the city manager to explain changes that have been made in the memorandum we have before us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following this being tabled two weeks ago, we did meet out on site with Counselor Hamel, Counselor Bolduc, Public Works Director Moynihan, the representative from Ekman Construction, whose name escapes me, I was over there as well. We looked at the site, the turning radius, condition of the road, condition of the bank, some of the concerns that were raised by Inabutter there last week. So a couple of things that have, that are new in this are that there was a 10 mile per hour posted truck not to exceed speed limit signs, which are already posted. We figured that was just a good common sense to have that out there anyway during this. So that's already been completed. We've increased the number of times that the vendor is videotaping for a record of the road and the shoreline. We also indicated that the only traffic, the intent of the only traffic that will be used along River Street would be for the long-wheel based units. So that's in number three because they really have no other way to access the site. If they came down on Arch Street, they end up trying to pull in the site and back and do that. And even when we were there that one day, that one long-wheeled truck came in to pick up the piece of heavy equipment and was up on the lawn and just couldn't facilitate. So only, the only trucks that would be coming down River Street would be those, those long-wheel based units. And the other trucks, cement trucks, dump trucks, the like, would be coming down on Jewett Street to be entering, I'm sorry, Arch Street to be entering the site. Also adding power sweeping, street sweeping on a, on a regular basis as conditions warrant out there. And we've charged the site superintendent to hold the feet to the fire on the speed limits and where the trucks are entering, where this is a public city street. If they are not compliant with the order, we have every right to adjust this at a later point, but we think everyone's on the same page. I do know the neighbor, Ms. Horn, I believe is her name, came out and mentioned, or spoke to, might be here, and spoke to Counselor Hamel once or twice while we were out there on the site. I know she was in my office this afternoon and picked up a copy of this this afternoon. So those are the changes and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments before we get a motion on the floor? Counselor Hamel?
The only thing, and I brought it up to Scott today, and he says it's addressed in here, but the 10-wheelers and the cement trucks using Arch Street really is, it's not listed in here that they, to do that. It does say that, you know, River Street would only be used for long-wheel base, so I guess you're assuming that Arch Street will be used for the rest. My only thing with that is that I'd rather see it in writing that the 10-wheelers and cement trucks would use Arch Street and not River. And it just goes back to one of the instances we had with another project where something wasn't put down on paper and nothing happened.
So you're going to ask for an amendment to this? When the appropriate time comes?
Just for number three.
I'm sorry?
For number three, yeah.
Number three, okay. Any other preliminary questions or comments before we get a motion on the floor? Okay, so what we'll do here is we'll get a motion on the floor and then an amendment to the motion would be in order. Okay? So the appropriate amendment here would be to move to approve temporary traffic order 2015-12, truck and equipment access to River Street as presented to us tonight. Moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by, somebody please, Counselor Hamel. Okay, we now have a motion on the floor and an amendment would be in order.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to number three that, other than the long-wheel based vehicles using River Street, all other vehicles are, trucks are to use Arch Street unless there's an instance that they just can't.
Does the clerk have that, that language? All right, I'd ask the clerk then to read item three back to us as amended.
This site superintendent will make every effort to limit the trucks using this roadway section to long-wheel based units that would have difficulty accessing the project site from other directions. All other construction vehicles will use Arch Street as permitted?
Yep. It sounds good.
Except in instances that would cause difficulty.
Yeah, you know, I do want to give the site manager, you know, the chance if he has a problem.
Got it? Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion on the amendment to item number three? Halls in favor of adopting the amendment, raise, raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, amendment is adopted and now we're back to the main motion, the main traffic order as amended in item three. Any further discussion? Halls in favor of adopting the amended order, please raise, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, will the no truck signs be returned?
Please come up. We're past the public comment period. Do we have the councils' okay to let her speak?
Sure.
Any objection?
Thank you, Karen Horn from River Street. I'd like to know if the no truck signs will be returned after the temporary ordinance is over next year, 2016. That's my question.
That'll go back to what it was.
The answer is yes. It'll go back, this order expires at the end of June 30, 2016, and the no truck signs that were there right now will go back up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the short answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to vote on the main motion now as amended. Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, the order is approved as amendment. Next up is that additional item of old business, which is budget resolution 25, 2015-15, resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for fiscal 2016. And my understanding is we had a numerical errors on the resolution that we adopted at our last meeting and need to correct that?
We did. We had the correct number in the water budget when it was submitted to us. It was the correct, in your budget book, it was correctly posted to the public hearing. I think in this day and age and cutting and pasting, we overlooked and transposed a couple of numbers. So the accurate numbers are reflected in the document you have before you. It's more technical in nature than requiring anything further because it was advertised properly. We did have the public hearing, there was no public comment on that, so this is a, more of a...
So do we need to rescind that previous vote?
I don't think so.
I don't think you need to rescind that, maybe just to amend it to reflect the numbers that were advertised would be appropriate.
And it doesn't change anything as far as tax collection?
It's not a part of the general fund, it's not anything to do with the tax rate that we did. Yep.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to adopt resolution 2015, to correct resolution 2015-15 as adopted at our last meeting. And this is a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015 and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $2,46,069, offsetting revenues of the same number, $2, 46,069, and capital reserve projects in the amount of $386,000. Have a motion to move the resolution. Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Baer. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand.
All right.
Vote is five to nothing and resolution 2015, corrected resolution 2015-15 is approved. I don't believe we have any other old business. We're on to nominations, appointments, and elections. We have the planning board elections before us tonight. Let me go over the process here quickly, make sure everybody's on the same page here. So we have, we have two open positions on the planning board for three-year terms. We have three candidates. So what we're going to do here, since this is, we're making appointments here, not having an election, is when I open the floor to motions in this area for nominations, you may nominate any of these three gentlemen who have applied for, that we interviewed last night. last meeting. You can nominate any of these three gentlemen for a three-year term, assuming that nomination is seconded. We will have discussion, if there is any, we will have a vote. If that particular candidate gets three or four more votes, three or more votes, they are elected to a term, and that gentleman's name will be taken off the board. Next up would be, in order would be a nomination to place another name in nomination for a three-year term. And we'll go through the same process on that second name. If that second person also receives three or more votes, then that person is elected to the planning board, selected to a three-year term on the planning board, and that will end the process right there. So, the third name, if that were to happen, the third name would not be placed in nomination at all, and there would be no chance to vote on the third nomination.
Except for alternate positions?
We do have two alternates.
I'm sorry?
We do have two alternate opening.
Have alternates.
Yes. I'm talking about the full-time, permanent members of the board, right? And then we'll get to alternates after that. But as far as, does everybody understand the process? Okay. All right, so motions would be in order for appointments to the planning board for a three-year term. Councilor Baer.
Can I make a comment first, or do you want to leave that after a second?
Oh, no, we'll, the comments would be in order after we get a nomination made.
Okay. I will nominate Mr. Bonus from Ward Four for a three-year term on the planning board.
Okay, Councilor Baer nominates Mr. Boness, Edwin R. Boness, for a three-year term on the planning board. Is there a second to that nomination? Councilor Doyle seconds it. Discussion is now in, in order.
Okay. First, it really is a great thing to have four applicants come in for appointments tonight. We rarely get more than one to apply, you know, for a single position or even sometimes two. And so, as often happens, the person that applies is almost automatically, you know, sent to the seat, which I don't think is a fair way to do things. I think the more that we have, the better choices we will, we will have. I also would like to note that there are three people on the board from Ward Six and two from Ward One, which I find to be a rather unfair representation for the whole city. I just think we should think about that when we have an opportunity to vote for somebody from another ward. Mr. Boness is from Ward Four, which has no representation. Mr. Bonus is also a contractor, and somebody like that on the planning board would be excellent as, these are the very people who have the problems and who need things from the planning board. His insight and his education in, in this field should be a plus to the planning board, sometimes making a decision and hearing how it affects a contractor. I guess that's really it, except that in nominating Mr. Boness from Ward Four, we bring a member who is a contractor into the picture, and one that can make suggestions and criticisms about some of the issues that seem to affect the market. And we have to admit that there has been a lot of, a lot of criticism, a lot of ups and downs lately between the planning and the zoning board, and we should do everything we can to make changes that will, we don't know that they will, but try to make things a little bit easier for the people that are applying for licenses, et cetera.
Any other discussion to Mr. Boness? Councilor Lippman.
Councilor Baer made some general remarks, I'd like to make some too about, you know, for me personally, this is, working through this is difficult, but I did come to the city service because I had two key things I wanted to accomplish. One was improve economic development, another one was with the ease of doing business with the city. And, you know, I think we've, in some respects, have a perception out there that was brought voice to by some people this evening. I received some other phone calls regarding about the ease of doing business frustrations that the tone and tenor of, of our boards isn't necessarily always as supportive of getting something done constructively. You know, some concerns about cost consideration, about, you know, tweaks to the plans, we heard an example of that or two tonight. I guess my, my feeling is that in reforming what we're doing here, we need a balance of new and existing folks to do that. And, you know, I think, you know, with respect to what got teed up tonight, you know, I'm going to support Councilor Baer's nomination, but I also want to say that, you know, in terms of the subsequent nomination, I'm going to be watching very carefully in terms of how we're perceived going forward, because I think ultimately, you know, when economic development is thwarted, development's thwarted, we all pay a price in the city, and, you know, we've got a lot of, fortunately, in this area, have a lot of good people who do a lot of good projects, and, you know, I think not being punitive, not being cost considerate, you know, having consideration of costs, and not having sort of the, the atmosphere that we currently had over the Weir's planning and the, the project recently. I think those are all black eyes for the city, and would like to see us change it, but I'd like to see us change it from within.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on Mr. Boness's nomination. All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes. Mr. Boness has been appointed to a three-year term on the planning board. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Charlie Sinclair to the board.
Second.
Is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
Mr. Sinclair's been nominated by Councilor Hamel and seconded by Councilor Baer. Councilor Lippman.
You know, I, I support Charlie's from Ward Three, and he does a lot of good work for the city. I think stepping into the alternate role would be a better first step for that without sort of blowing up the situation. The situation needs to be fixed, but I think blowing it up is not the right course for correcting it. It needs to be corrected, but I don't think taking out the current chairman is the best way to get where we're trying to get to. I think the manager and the planning director should take, you know, notice of what's come across here. It's not healthy when, you know, a position like that is contested, that people aren't satisfied. And I think we've heard there's a constituency that's not satisfied.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on Mr. Sinclair's nomination. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Sinclair to a three-year term on the planning board, please raise a hand. All those opposed, vote is two in favor, three against, and that nomination fails. Floor is still open.
I'd like to nominate Warren Hutchins.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to nominate Warren Hutchins as a.
Warren Hutchins' name has been placed nomination by Councilor Doyle. Is there a second? Councilor Bolduc seconds that motion, so we now have the nomination of Warren Hutchins on the floor. Discussion. Councilor Lippman.
I'd just repeat, I think, Warren, you need to take stock of what's been said here tonight and try to change the tone and tenor. You're the leader of the planning board, and hope that you can do that. I have confidence that you can, with the support of Shauna and the manager, make some change in the tone and tenor of how we're administering this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Hutchins' appointment to a three-year term on the planning board, please raise a hand. Those opposed, vote is three in favor, two against, motion carries, and Mr. Hutchins is appointed to a three-year term on the planning board. So, that takes us through the full terms. Next up, we have an appointment to be made as an alternate to the planning board. We had one applicant, and that is Mr. Lamani. Would anyone care to put Mr. Lamani's name in nomination? Councilor Bolduc, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Baer. Any discussion of appointing Michael Lamani to a three-year term as an alternate on the planning board? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, thank you. Question?
Nope.
That appointment is confirmed.
Okay, can I make another nomination?
You may.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Charlie Sinclair for a position on the alternate, as an alternate on the planning board, if he would accept it.
Second.
Before I, before I.
I don't know if he can do that.
Before we take that nomination, I need to seek some advice here. Do we need to clear that sort of thing with applicants? He didn't apply for that position, and he's not here tonight, so.
I think the way Councilor Hamel phrased it, that the nomination, subject to him accepting it, works out just fine. He was seeking to serve on the board, and his preference was a full, but he certainly can choose to accept or decline the alternate role. If that's the will of the council, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion from Councilor Hamel to point Charlie Sinclair to a three-year term as an alternate on the planning board, with the understanding that he didn't apply for that position, and we're asking him to accept it, which he is not obligated to do. That motion was seconded by Councilor Baer. Is there any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, and that nomination is also confirmed. Council comments?
I'd just like to make one, one more about what's going on here tonight. You know, I think we got a lot of feedback from a number of different sources that, there are some things that need to be fixed in the planning and zoning process, and, you know, I'm committing to those who would have liked to see me vote differently, to see in it through, that we get this fixed. And I think the other counselors and the manager will team up with to try to make it better for people trying to get things done in the city. We apologize on behalf of those who've been affected adversely, that we'll try to do a better job.
Councilor Bolduc.
Yes, I'd just like to speak to the issue tonight about the people on the planning board. When someone wants to go before the planning board, I would like to be called and say that they are in Ward Six, and I would be there to help them do what they have to do. I always get told after they've gone to the planning board. I'd like to be there when they start something new.
As an advocate, you mean?
That's right. And that doesn't happen. It only happens after the fact. So, anybody out there that goes to the planning board and wants something that's pretty much like what they're talking about, please call me, or call me on anything, I don't care. I'll be there. But if I don't know about it, I'm not going to be there. So, I would just like to make sure that the people are aware that I didn't get, I only got one phone call that I know of to come here tonight to vote for, for a person, and that was it. And I read the papers, and when I read the papers, I said, why didn't they come to me before they went to the planning board? I'd have been there to either support them or tell them that, you know, what I could tell them, but when you don't know, you don't know. And you won't be there. But I would like to make that offer to anybody, I don't care what ward they're in or whatever, but especially in Ward Six, I would like to be notified of what they're, what they're up to.
Okay. Any other council comments? Motion to adjourn would be in order. Councilor Hamel makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Bolduc. Yes, sir. Mr. Moore said quickly.
Before you go to the end?
You need, I can't hear you, sir.
I'd just like to make one comment before we're done. And the comment is this, I'm going to take Mr. Lippman up on his offer. Before I put the orange fence up, I'd like to meet with the city manager, the head of the zoning board, the head of the planning board, and sit down and have somebody tell me what they want at that church, because I'm trying to figure out if I put 20 units up there and the 20 units are using the building for storage, and we got stuff all over the place, because then they have no control, as there's 18 apartments there, how that makes a difference between what we're going to use for storage now. So, I'm going to take Mr. Bolduc up on his, what he said, and, and I want to see the city come together and tell me what they want to do with it, and make a suggestion so that, that we can work and figure out a way to do something with this piece of property up there that's constructive, instead of finding a way to cut me up, what we can do to be constructive. So, here it is for tonight. You guys got your chance.
You got, let me know. I'll be there.
All we got to do is, the city manager can call me. Anytime that you guys can put the deal together with Shauna, him, and whoever else wants to sit there, and come up with some ideas, and let's, let's, so that when we go to the meeting, we're not all fighting. We come up with something.
Absolutely. That's the way to do it.
Thank you for letting me speak again.
Okay, thank you. All right, all's in favor of adjourning, please raise a hand. Vote is five to nothing, motion is.